Good evening. I want to welcome you all to the June 5, 2018, meeting of the Buncombe County Commission. Thank you all for being with us. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands on one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we begin the meeting this evening, there are two things that are on my mind. First, as the school year comes to a close, we, as a community, owe a debt of gratitude to the teachers, principals, administration leadership, and all of the public staff who work to support our public schools in Asheville and Buncombe County. Our children and youth are better because of their deep commitment to education, and therefore, we, as a community, are also better. We do not say thank you enough to those who work to support our schools and kids, so let us tonight say again, thank you. Second, our commission agenda this evening includes continued focus on the struggle our community faces, along with other communities across the country, with the opioid crisis. It is not the first time this issue has been on our agenda, and it will unfortunately not be the last. As we recognize both the great things that are happening in our community and the hard issues that are before us, it's evident that we are at our best when we come together, even as we share differences of opinion and approaches on these issues. Before we begin our work this evening, let us have a moment of silent prayer and reflection for the safety of our kids and families as they begin their summer vacations, and for answers for how we can support those who are struggling in our community with challenges that can sometimes be too difficult to be solved alone. Please join me in a moment of silence.
I'd like to take a moment, too. The town of Black Mountain suffered horrendous losses with the flooding last Wednesday. Seventy-one people were displaced. The majority of them are back in their homes, but the damage to the community, they were without water. They had water, but it was on a boil advisory for seven, six days, and millions of dollars worth of damage was done to infrastructures, greenways, parks. But knowing Black Mountain, they will rally, but I hope you can have all those folks in your mind, because the ones that got displaced, once again, were the poorest people that live in Black Mountain.
Thank you, Commissioner Frost. All right. Before we begin our meeting, I'd like to ask everyone to please silence your cellphones, place them on mute or turn them off. We also want to announce that parking validation and bus passes are now available for commission workshops and our public meetings. Anyone parking for this meeting or using public transit can pick up passes from our security personnel on the way out. We want to make it easy for folks to access our commission meetings. The passes are valid only for the meeting today. All right. I want to quickly read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing Board in an open and public manner. Are there any items on the agenda, the outcome of which will have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any Board member? Does any Board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? There being none, all Board members have a duty and obligation to vote on all matters that are voted on by the Board this evening. All right. We now come to the consent agenda. Oh, and I'm sorry, I neglected in the pre-meeting to note that we need to add one item to the agenda, which is the appointment of an interim finance director effective June 16. May we add that by consensus? Great. All right. We will take that up under "new business." All right. Thank you. All right. Commissioner Belcher requested some additional information about the budget amendment summaries, so it looks like Mandy Stone will help us out with that.
So Chairman and Commissioners, as part of our transition and moving toward a more transparent system, we amended our budget amendment format close to a year ago to provide more detail, sometimes even pictures, future impacts. So we had made those changes early in county management transition. Still meant that individuals, whether it were commissioners or the public, had to click on every budget amendment. So in an effort to streamline transparency, we've added one single document before all the budget amendments, so somebody can look at one page and know every budget amendment and the detail and impact related to it. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
I just wanted to make sure that the public knew that that was there, and that it is an excellent summary. You just click on it and print it, and if you want more detail, you can go to that detail, but if you just want the summary, it gives excellent information, so. And it'll appear in the consent most of the time, but, you know, we can pull out whatever that we want to. But I just wanted you to make sure they know about it, so they would access it, because it's good information. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and to follow the remainder of the agenda as published?
So moved.
A second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Under "good news," we have congratulations to Scott Mashburn. Mr. Mashburn won second place in the North Carolina Chapter Solid Waste Association of North America Rodeo winner, heavy equipment operator. So, Mr. Mashburn, congratulations, and we appreciate your work, and Jim's got a few things to add.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity. As you stated, Chairman, each year, the local or the state SWANA chapter offers a rodeo, and it's an opportunity to highlight and showcase the skills of driving, of landfill operations. And while that's a great opportunity for them to enter into a friendly competition across the state about showcasing their skills, it is a highly specialized and very important and critically important aspect of operating a landfill, that we have extremely qualified people operating the equipment. They operate massive equipment that is about making sure that the landfill is safe environmentally and, from a public health perspective, that it's safe. And so while we're glad that there's a competition, it really, we're happy, too, to highlight the great skill that people like Scott demonstrate day in and day out, and we're so glad that he was able to go to the competition. And he came away second-place winner, and he will now compete against others in Denver this summer to be able to compete nationally. And I would just highlight, this is the second year in a row that we've had winners from that. And so, Scott, congratulations for doing a great job and for representing us so well. And as part of the recognition for Scott, we also want to let you know that he will be receiving a performance bonus of $750 for his diligence and his efforts in the solid waste. His wife, Josette, is here also to celebrate that. And I also want to recognize and take an opportunity to recognize the solid waste management team, and that's Dane Peterson, Kristy Smith, Nick Edmonds, and Stephen Hunter. They do an outstanding job, day in and day out, of making sure that we have a well-operated landfill and transfer station. So it's great, my great privilege to congratulate Scott and to celebrate that good news. Thank you.
All right. Great job, Scott. Thank you, Jim, and congratulations, Scott, on representing Buncombe County, and we know you're going to continue to do a great job, so best of luck going forward. All right. The next item under "good news" is an update on the Early Childhood Initiative, and Commissioners Jasmine Beach Ferrara and Robert Presley are going to be helping us out on this one.
Good evening. If you asked a parent in Buncombe County what they would do to make sure their child had every opportunity in the world, their reply would be pretty much anything. That's exactly the spirit we need in our community, and that's why, last December, this commission unanimously passed a strategic priority to ensure that every child in Buncombe County has an equal opportunity to thrive in their first 2,000 days through initiatives such as expanding access to high-quality early childhood education. And that's why we're here tonight, to celebrate the good news of two new early childhood initiatives that will mean more kids and families have access to early childhood education, and that mean that more qualified teachers are being recruited and supported through the early years of their training. The reality right now is that too many kids in Buncombe County are struggling. One quarter of kids in our community live in poverty, and others struggle due to factors like a lack of access to healthy food or unstable housing. I, in this commission, truly believe we can change this reality, and that expanding access to early childhood education is a key part of how we'll do it. It works in the short term to help keep kids, to help kids succeed in school, and it sets in motion a lifetime of benefits, from improved health to access to post-secondary education to increased earnings. Tonight, we want to give thanks for and celebrate the good news of these new classrooms, these new opportunities for teachers, these new partnerships, and all the children whose lives can be changed by this work. Happy to introduce Commissioner Robert Presley, who will add some remarks.
Well, thank, she said it all, but, you know, it's very important to me that, as a commission, all seven of us unanimously voted on this, but the important thing about it is, is we made it a priority, and we've got six priorities here that are at top of our list, and this is one of them, and we're continuing with the other ones also. And I just got to thank Jasmine for all the work she has put into this, and of all of us that are supporting it and will continue to support it. Thank you. And Rachel.
Hi, Rachel Nygaard. The two initiatives that we are here to announce and to celebrate tonight are partnering with the YWCA to expand their high-quality early childcare center. With partnership from Buncombe County, the YWCA will grow from serving 80 children to an additional 42 children on top of that 80, adding an infant classroom and adding two pre-K classrooms. And so Salaah Merritt is here with us and going to say a couple of words about that. The other partnership is more of a long-term strategy. We brought together, in recent months, conversations around what can we do to improve the early childhood system and identify ways to tackle the issue of not enough highly-qualified teachers in the field. And so this new partnership has come together, a Partnership for Excellence in Early Childhood Education, spearheaded by Warren Wilson College. And we have, from Warren Wilson, Dr. Annie Jonas, who's professor and Director of Faculty Engagement, and also with that collaborative, Werner Center for Early Learning, AB Tech, and Buncombe County Schools. So I invite Salaah, and Annie, and Jackie, and others to come up. We'll say a few words to give more information about those partnerships and do a quick photo up to celebrate this evening.
Again, my name is Salaah Merritt. I'm the Chief Program Officer with the YWCA. Chairman and Commissioners, on behalf of the YWCA of Asheville, we thank you for the opportunity to partner with us to, as we work to address the childcare crisis here in Buncombe County. There is a quote that says, "Unity is strength. When there is teamwork and collaboration, wonderful things can be achieved." With this said, this partnership between our organizations will allow us to do wonderful things. With your assistance, we have been able to begin the expansion of our early learning program. We currently provide childcare to approximately 80 children. With your assistance, we'll be able to provide childcare to approximately 42 more children in our community. These funds have allowed us to move from having one classroom of infant toddlers, two-year-olds and three-year-olds, to two classrooms each, and that is significant for us. We're also reconstructing our playground with some of the funds we have been provided by the county. This expansion has been made possible largely in part by this partnership and your generosity. Again, we thank you for partnering with us and supporting us as we continue to do great work. Thank you.
I'm Annie Jonas, Chair of the Education Department at Warren Wilson, and we are so pleased to have this commitment from Buncombe County Commission. I want to applaud you for supporting this innovative and creative solution that brings together many, many partners, and we are just proud to be leading this effort in our community, and thank you for your commitment. We feel like this, our Partnership for Excellence in Early Childhood Education offers creative solutions and innovation with the strength of a collaborative public and private partnership. And to demonstrate the breadth of that partnership, I'd like to invite President Lynn Morton from Warren Wilson to come forward, my colleague Maura Davis from Warren Wilson, Jennifer Bosworth from AB Tech, Marcia Whitney from Werner, Jackie Pennick, representing Werner, and we're starting to run out of room. Chris Tucker, and then from Buncombe County Schools, Kristy Cheek, Crystal Cheek, and Gina Toomey. Gina Toomey. So this is the breadth of the partnership. I want to hand it over to Jackie Pennick, who will say a few words.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, you know, it was your work session on the early childhood teacher shortage that spawned this project. It's amazing that such key community partners came together to create what I think will be one of the best things that happened in early childhood for a long, long time in this community. The beauty is that it's not only the potential to address the teacher shortage by putting warm bodies in a classroom, but to truly develop high-quality teachers that are well-trained and committed to the positive outcomes for our children, no matter what their socioeconomic backgrounds might be. But it is our county commissioners and your commitment to early childhood and to making a difference during those first 2,000 days of life for all children, and the grant that you have given to us that is giving wings to this project, and we can't thank you enough. And I will say that I am retiring, actually have retired, and I couldn't think of a better gift that you could have given me, to care so much and support this project for young children and families in our community. So, thank you.
We would love to, yeah, get a good picture. Can you come in? Can you inter here? Yeah. Yep.
I think we're good. They'll Photoshop us in later.
Yeah, I think that's the most people we've had behind that thing. I mean, y'all know y'all can come out around that, but we almost had a fire issue, because I think we only can handle, like, so many people behind us. Y'all can smile in this meeting, it's fine.
All right. Thank you all for that terrific update. All right. Next up is a proclamation recognizing Elder Abuse Awareness Month. Christina Stenhouse with HHS will accept the proclamation, which will be presented by Commissioner Belcher.
Yes, my pleasure to read this proclamation, and we'll have a few words after this. County of Buncombe Proclamation of Vulnerable Adults and Elder Abuse Awareness Month. Whereas Buncombe County's vulnerable and elder adults deserve to live safely with dignity, and whereas vulnerable and elder adults of all socioeconomic, racial, and ethnic backgrounds may be targets of abuse, neglect, or exploitation which occurs in families, long-term care facilities, and communities, and whereas 1,704 reports of abuse, neglect, or exploitation of vulnerable and elder adults were made in public county health and human services in 2017, with 1,127 screened in for evaluation. Whereas many cases of elder abuse and mistreatment go unreported, and professionals are often unaware of the problem, and whereas protecting Buncombe County's vulnerable and elder adults is a community responsibility, and it is imperative that communities work together to help reduce and prevent abuse, neglect, and exploitation, including physical, psychological, or financial abuse, and whereas all residents should watch for signs of abuse such as physical trauma, withdrawal, depression, anxiety, fear of family members, friends, or caregivers, and report suspected abuse or exploitation to the County Health and Human Services Office. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners for the County of Buncombe as follows: One, that this Board does hereby proclaim June 2018 as Vulnerable Adults and Elder Abuse Awareness Month in Buncombe County; Two, that this Board does hereby encourage all citizens to participate in community efforts to support and improve the safety and well-being of vulnerable and elder adults, and secure their right to live free of abuse, neglect, or exploitation; and Three, that this proclamation be effective upon its adoption, adopted this the fifth day of June 2018. Buncombe County Board of Commissioners, signed by Chairman Brownie Newman. Thank you.
I'm short. I'm going to make this a little slower. June is always one of my favorite times of the year, because we get this proclamation, and it gives us a chance. We have a lot of things that go on in June that give us a chance to make the community aware of this issue, because any chance we have of doing anything about it starts with awareness, and it starts with awareness for all of you and all of the community. We know it's happening, and we can't do anything about it without having it reported to us and having people step out and take care of the people around them. Older adults are some of the most vulnerable people in our community, and I think sometimes we forget that. And this is a chance, June is always a chance for us to be able to say, hey, it is, it is the truth, and we do need help. I do want to recognize, I have a lot of staff here tonight, and I won't make you come up, because I know you hate that, but if you will stand up, please. We have some supervisors and some social workers from adult services who, these are the people that hit the pavement every day, and these are the ones who go out there and show, not only with their hard work and their great social work skills, but their amazing care and compassion every single day to do something for these adults in our community. And a lot of times, they have to see things and do things that people don't really want to know are happening, and they do something about it every single day, no matter what. And I just appreciate so much having such amazing staff. The last thing I'll say, and I'll try to be quick, every time I have a captive audience, I try to say this. It really, truly takes the whole community for us to do any of the things that we're trying to do to protect adults. And it takes the public, it takes great partnerships with our community partners, which I feel like we have, and we have some really exciting things that are going on right now that really highlight those partnerships, and I just wanted to touch on them very quickly. Chairman Newman, I don't know if you've received notification from AARP yet that we were accepted into the community, the age-friendly community network, but we have been, and if you haven't received that, it should be coming. But I just wanted to kind of make everyone aware, very briefly, of what that means for Buncombe County, because it is a really big deal. We started working on that application in the fall of 2017, and with the support of our commissioners and the support of Mandy Stone, who was our HHS Director when we very first started doing all of this, we were able to get an application together that AARP accepted and put us into a network where we get a lot of national support now for trying to make our community of Buncombe County age-friendly. And I just want to read to you all what that definition is, so that it's not just words and you actually understand what that means. An age-friendly community has policies, services, and structures that facilitate older adults staying healthy, participating in economic growth, remaining socially active, and living in security. Communities in which older adults can successfully age are more likely to mitigate the challenges and enjoy the opportunities related to older citizens. Actions leading to age-friendly communities lead to happier, healthier residents of all ages. And that's true. There are eight domains of livability that are involved in this network: outdoor spaces and buildings, transportation, housing, social participation, respect and social inclusion, civic participation in employment, communication and information, and community and health services. And this is a five-year process, so we're just kind of at the beginning of getting everything together, but there are a lot of exciting things happening with this, and it ties directly to one of the goals of the new Buncombe County Aging Plan that we adopted in January of this year, which was to increase age-friendly capabilities of our county. And it's a need, and it's something that we're really addressing, and we so appreciate everyone's support and help in doing that. Basically, what it is, is really infusing age awareness into things that are already happening in our county. This isn't reinventing the wheel. It isn't, there may be some new things, but it's really looking at what's already going on, and how do we make it more age-friendly for all ages, but especially for older adults. So, like I said, there's a timeline going for the next five years. There'll be a steering committee that's being put together, and we will absolutely be offering an invitation to any commissioners who have any interest in being involved in that steering committee, because we would love your input and your leadership. I just want to say that we really, really appreciate the support of all of you. Our county government leadership has really gotten behind us on this, and we feel really great. We would not have been able to get in this network without your all's support and your endorsement. So thank you so, so much, and we really appreciate all that you do.
Next up, we have a public hearing to consider an economic development incentive for General Electric. Thank you. Tim Lev will present this item on the General Electric Economic Development Incentive.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners, Public. Today, we've asked Michael McGuire, who's the plant manager for our GE facility in town, to come in and present on the nature of the expansion project, in particular, the timeline. We also have a few slides that we'd like to show you that'll help us facilitate today's discussion, which are now on your screen. These slides are just kind of a summary of what is present in the economic development agreement, and we will walk you through those shortly. Could I have some technical assistance, please? There it is. Gotcha. All right. So like I said, Michael McGuire, our plant manager for GE, will walk us through, so I'll allow him to speak.
Yeah, so a little bit of background about GE Aviation. For folks that may not be familiar about our operation, we make jet engine components for GE Aviation, which is basically on every commercial platform that we produce. We're about 420 employees, roughly, right now, and continuing to grow, and, again, this business has been a... business has been around since really the late 40s, it continues to grow, and really, GE looks at this site as one of its premier sites, and it's really mostly because of the technical expertise of our employees, which really come from Buncombe County, and also the reason they're continuing to invest in a site like ours is because really we have a community that supports economic growth, supports manufacturing, and we have the support of, of local government officials that are behind what our business is trying to do. You know, as part of the, the, the commitment that we're making is we're adding an incremental 131 jobs over the next several years, as well as another $105 million of capital investment into the community. And then with those jobs, the hourly, I'm sorry, the, the annual wage rates are in the $49,000 range, so we feel like that the, the good-paying, long-term, stable, growth technology jobs are really what Buncombe County needs, and that's the, the type of jobs that these are, high-tech, very complex, and great-growth jobs for our community. Next slide. Yeah, so this is just a schedule of the, of the investment through the end of 2021. You can see the investment on the left side, and then to the right, you can see the, the jobs over the next several years. So, we feel like this is a great commitment that our business is putting a great faith of, a good-faith effort into the growth of this area.
Thank you, Michael. At this time, I'll walk us through some of the highlights from the economic development agreement. As always, Mr. Fu is available if there are any questions about the contract or any of the legal matters. In terms of our next slide, one thing I'd like to stress about this particular agreement, it is a joint economic development agreement. When I say joint, this effort includes city dollars as well as county dollars, and in addition, a matching grant from the state, so very important that our local partners are all playing together in this space. In addition, as relates to the county's portion of this, per our economic development agreement, the, the numbers that you see on the screen are, are those that are proposed this evening. These are pending this public hearing and ultimately your vote, but in terms of the incentive agreement, we're looking at about $685,000 payable over three years. If you look at the breakout of that, it's about 50% for jobs and 50% for investment, so about $342,000 per. Again, this is payable over a three-year period, and you can see that payout schedule in the presentation. Next slide. In terms of the impact of this economic development agreement, this is a key important, a key part of why, why we do this, but we're talking about, as Michael said, the creation of 131 jobs and approximately $104 million in capital and business personal property investment that is taxable in Buncombe County. When we talk about the amount of tax that it's anticipated, these are estimates, but we're looking at approximately $2.8 million in tax revenue over a 10-year period, which is an estimate, of course. In addition, we've been provided analysis from our Economic Development Coalition Partners, the EDC, and you can see that analysis that is provided to us in that table. When the EDC does their research, they look at what they call direct effect, which are those actual jobs that are created by the company, and so in this case, 131 new jobs for approximately $7 million in labor income. From there, they talk about the indirect effect of the, of GE in the community, and those indirect effects, those are more related to suppliers, not necessarily GE, but those that sort of supply GE with different parts and components, or software, or, excuse me, services. Our, our final area is induced effect, and so this is labor income on paychecks that are sort of derived in Buncombe County and sort of spent in the local community. So when you look at all of those numbers, the EDC estimates approximately 280 jobs for about $12.8 million in terms of labor income. Those are our quick slides for today, our presentation on the economic development agreement. Are there any questions?
I've, I've got a question on the job slide, you showing 14, two, and then can you comment on the four, the first year's 14, second year's two? Two's kind of unusual to see that, I think, can y'all comment on the, on that?
Yeah, so that's based on production schedules, and we see a very quick ramp, so we've tried to build that plan. That, that plan is very fluid. We're seeing right now that we're already, you know, that a lot of these numbers were put together earlier in the year, we're starting to see those numbers pulled to the left already.
Okay, I have two other questions. One is, originally when the, when GE, when the, the plant was built, and there was approximately 300 employees there at that time?
About 290 is where, where we were, the baseline.
When was that? What year was that?
That was in early 14.
Okay, and you say you're at 420 now?
Correct. So, so our original incentive was for, in 2014, was for 52 people, and we've exceeded that incentive by 80 people, so we've, we've, we've blown past that, and, and as well as we're about $6 million past the investment of our original commitment as well, so the, the performance is there, and we feel like that this, this, this growth plan will also exceed.
So the other question that I have, or, or like for, maybe you can comment on this a little bit, I know that for the purpose, for the benefit of Ms., Ms. Cheek and CTE, Pisgah, my understanding that Pisgah in Haywood County, the high school, has a program where, where kids come, they work at GE, and then, then some of them right out of high school are going to work for GE. Can you, can you tell us a little bit about that? And I, I just think it's a, it's a great thing, I think it's a, it's, it's good for the, for certainly the, that community and, 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 and our county too, but I just would like to hear a, a little bit about, about that and what, what you pay them when they start right out of high school.
Yeah, so it's, thanks, Joe, we, we've got a program through Pisgah High School, it's a partnership, and we also have this through AB Tech, and we're working with some other high schools as well, but Pisgah has been the main one. We actually take seniors in high school, their entire senior year, they will go to school in the morning, they come to us around 10 o'clock, and they work about six hours in the afternoons, but it comes out of their machining program. We have a very tough time getting really high-skilled machinists. Again, you're building aircraft engine components that are, you know, the, measured in tenths of thousands, so a fraction of the human hair, and the ability to machine these components take a very, very high skill, and we found that we can get really strong technical talent out of that program out of Pisgah. So we pay these, these high school students about 16 bucks an hour out of the gate, and, and they are not only able to learn a great skill, and it's a, it's a apprenticeship program, after a certain period of time, they come out with an apprenticeship program diploma that they graduate from, as well as earning income and have a longstanding, stable job going forward. We, we have hired a, a huge percentage of our workforce comes out of that program, and we're attempting to, to expand that, again, have it with, with AB Tech and some other schools as well.
Okay, thank you. It's all ahead.
One thing I will add, we, we gave Pisgah $100,000 grant last year as a, as a means of, of trying to give back to that program.
How many employees came, that are currently working there now came from Buncombe County?
You know, that's a good, good question. I, I don't have that, that number breakdown of our employees right now, something I, I'm able to get to you, I would, I would say it's, it's a, it's a large percentage. I, I wouldn't even want to guess.
And the average of 49,000, what, what's the range of that? What's the lowest and what would be the highest, and how does that break out?
Yeah, again, I don't have those numbers in front of me right now, I mean, an average is definitely an average, I mean, we have, you know, the vast majority of our employees, of course, are the machinist technicians, but at the same time, you know, with running a very complex operation as we do, engineers, leadership, quality, inspection technology folks, I mean, there's, it, the, the range is very wide.
No, no, I appreciate that, we were just trying to get away from it, salary averages, we were trying to get more specific wages, but that's fine if you don't have that.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't have those numbers with you.
All right, if there's, thank you, Michael, thank you, Tim. Any other information for now, or we could?
I would add just briefly, the economic development agreement that is before you is written in a way that GE must create new jobs, but also maintain existing jobs, so when you look at the total footprint of GE, at the end of this agreement, there'll be 550-ish jobs, so we're seeing, you know, a, a growth there, so that, that's what I would add.
All right. Thank you. We're gonna hold, hold a public hearing, so let's go ahead and do that now. I will open the public hearing at 5:46 PM. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment? Mr. Yelton? And each person who comments will have a three, up to three minutes to speak to the board about this item.
I think I can get it all in in three minutes. First and foremost, I'm all for economic development. I sure see money going there rather than parks and greenways, and we live in the middle of the Blue Ridge Parkway in the great Smoky Mountains, and we got the French Broad River to drown in if we want to. But if you read your literature, Commissioners, it will tell you where that average 40-some came from. Under their proposal for that economic grant, the details are in what your county manager has given you. There's 25 jobs in the $90,000 range, and 100 and some jobs in the $37,000 to $39,000 range. So that information is in front of you and was in your package, okay? So I suggest you read those. Furthermore, it's very obvious that Pisgah has done a good job in going out in the community and finding something to do. So I think that's good use of the money, and I happen to be looking at our superintendent of Buncombe County Schools. I think we need to be doing the same thing. You all have had some great questions here, and the question I would like answered, and let's see if any of you care enough to do it. How many of your jobs, and Ellen, this plays on your question, how many of your jobs are filled by people from Buncombe County? Not that we don't care, but our traffic is bad enough, we don't need more people driving in from Haywood County, as you all know, if you live in Haywood County, or driving in from Madison. Bottom line is, we need to know how many employees come from Buncombe County, and how many of those high-paying jobs go to people from this area? And that involves AB Tech, and everything that I've mentioned, Buncombe County Schools, AB Tech, the average, you all have that information on it, Mr. Whiteside, and I think it needs to be looked at in detail. But thank you for the questions you have asked, please keep pursuing them, and I have nothing against this company. I started this out by saying I'd rather see money go to economic development than I had to greenways and parkways, so keep those questions up, but look in your package and you'll see the numbers I just gave you.
All right, anyone else? Okay, we will adjourn the public hearing at 5:49 PM, and I'll bring you back to the board for discussion or motion.
I move that we approve the incentive plan. I'll second that.
All right, there's a motion, and a second, further discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right, pass the six to one. Thank you both for the information, and, Michael, great to see you, good luck on the expansion, and appreciate all the work that's, that's happening at your facility in, in Buncombe County. Thank you.
Keep, keep us updated on that, the CTE program, the machinist program out there too, we'd love to get as much information as we can on it, okay?
Okay, next up is the FY19 budget, and Mandy Stone will tee us off.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. I want to begin just with a summary of the presentation we made in the budget message on May 15th. I do want to make the point, as we begin the presentation, that line item budget, interactive budget tools, all details of the budget have been, will have been posted by the time you vote on the budget, six weeks to the public. So we've made a lot of effort, and I want to talk through that when the slides come up, to engage the public and seek public involvement and input in this process. The first slide you see shows the timeline over the last year, beginning July 11th, about 11 days after I started work, and what resulted in a series of 50 hours of public work sessions you held in the last year related to the budget. Somebody goes to this slide online, you can click on any of those, they're live links, and go back to the details of those presentations, and, and, you know, again, we talked about it last time, and I want to make the point, in those work sessions, it was about deepening the understanding and awareness of Commissioners, and through that process, the public related to our budget. Also want to say, while we appreciate the coverage of the media related to the budget, we've also pushed out stories ourself via Facebook. We really want the public to know what's in this budget and offer them every opportunity to comment on it and participate, not only in this budget hearing, but in the opportunity to have over the next two weeks to reach out to you as Commissioners or us as staff with questions or comments. Again, the budget that we brought to you on the 15th, the county prepared a budget, as you know, you got line item budgets this year, we went back and built line item budgets in every department. We, we brought you a budget request that would decrease the tax rate by one cent through efficiencies, removal of duplication, maximizing resources across departments. That would have brought you a budget proposal at $315,311 at 52.9 cent tax rate. That held all services whole, addressed departmental needs, and advanced your six strategic priorities, one of which you heard about earlier tonight, and another of what, which you'll hear about later. In our work session on May 8th, we received the request from our public education systems, which totaled $4 million. As a result of that, we brought you a proposed flat tax rate, a proposed budget of $318,72851. That included $3.4 million for the education request. It reduced the education request by $618,000, and that was in order to comply with your own policy related to fund balance. It did request, it did address the majority of the education requests, as well as hold the tax rate flat. I talked about in the budget message the last year, a very challenging year, but a year where I feel like as an organization, we looked, we looked adversity in the eye and saw opportunity. We made significant changes to our management system, we built infrastructure across financial systems and management system, we built out budget and financial oversight, and built systems for ongoing monitoring, and increased transparency to the public. We also delivered quality services across our departments, we continued to deliver those services, and we advanced your strategic priorities. And I'll remind you in the public that if they go to the website, they can click on the detail in each of those three categories. We, we spent the last year building a new budget framework, and part of that's about ownership, and that's ownership at all levels, understanding that the public elects you to be their representatives and their voice in terms of their needs, their tolerance for how we expend public dollars. We have ownership, and departments have ownership in the management delivery of that, as do employees, so it's a shared ownership, and we wanted to be clear about what those unique roles were. We also focused on rightsizing, not only rightsizing department budgets, rightsizing the county budget, and also rightsizing fund balance and appropriated fund balance, and unfortunately, or unfortunately for the other institutions that you fund, we've asked you to consider rightsizing for them, and you'll hear that as we move through tonight. Accountability, we really have tried to, through your instruction and direction, be very disciplined in our practice, very structured. We've used data to make informations and built dashboards and public systems so that not only you, but the public can see every aspect of our financial and budget, not only our data, but our process. And then we've built processes that quite frankly just didn't exist countywide. We've built an inclusive budget model, our performance management team, which was built using existing res- using existing resources, has worked with every county department. Y'all have seen those line item budgets, you've seen the detail and depth at which they looked at trend data, they looked at revenues, they looked at fees, they've shared their notes with you and posted their notes to the public. All of that process being very forward-facing. What that new approach delivered in the first year is, from a county perspective, we addressed all departmental needs, and we still brought you a budget that recommended a one-cent tax decrease. We also reduced our reliance on appropriated fund balance by 56% in this recommended budget. That's really important to us in terms of discipline and structure. You know, we have a long history of appropriating fund balance and not always expanding it, but it becomes a real number. It's not a number you can just ignore. You either have to address it through reduced expenditures or increased revenues. We really wanted to end our reliance on it. We need to be able to manage the ongoing operations of the county without relying on savings or money that's intended for crisis situations. We developed a performance management system that began to build dashboards and measures across county departments, and you'll see that build out in the next year. It will be, those will be the tools by which we evaluate every vacancy, the tools by which we're budgeting every day. Every day, we're looking at where we are in terms of expenditures and revenues and service growth or changes, and how we realign the resources you've given us to achieve the best outcome for the public. We reduced salaries at the highest level of the organization to address a longstanding commitment you made for the lowest-paid employees, and that continues in this budget. And we reallocated staff to better leverage resources. We took staff that existed across departments, often combined those to reduce redundancies and maximize resources and talent, and we feel like that's been a large part of this model. We also built out not only the work sessions, but online tools. And you've highlighted these at your work session. I'll talk a little bit in a minute about Budget Explorer. People can see our budget online through these dashboards and tools, the links at the bottom of it. They can see our debt and debt transparency, our debt affordability, all of our capital projects, all of our positions, all of our pay and all of our benefits are forward-facing to the public. This year, we unveiled an interactive Budget Explorer with line item details so the public can actually go in, dive as deep as they're interested in various parts of the budget for information, and to provide us informed input on how we ought to move forward. Again, you'll see the link at the bottom of that that takes you to those tools. So our prepared budget request, general fund budget, as I said, was $315,311,448 at a 52.9 cent tax rate. We are proposing an education increase in this budget of $3.4 million. We would make our proposed general fund budget $318,720 at a 53.9 cent tax rate. That is a flat tax rate. So it deals with both addressing departmental needs and a $4 million request from the school system at a basically flat tax rate. Just some general highlights when you look at the FY '19 general fund budget, the value of a penny, $3.7 million. As I noted the last time, and I'm acknowledging that there is a difference of $318,000 between the request the education system made and the value of a penny. We will continue to refine that number as we get final state budget numbers and final sales tax numbers. And to comply with our own policy, we're bringing your recommended budget that maintains a 15% undesignated fund balance. It's about two and a half months of operating for us. If you look at the comparison between last year's budget and this budget, I just want to highlight that you see the difference in revenues from $315 million to $311, and the difference in appropriated fund balance, that is a reduction in appropriated fund balance, $8.6 million or almost 56%. And then you see the difference in expenditures. Some of that related, as I shared before, to some changes in the state level where childcare subsidies don't run through our system anymore because of NCFAST, but that's really a wash. There were both the expenditures and the revenues built into that, but they will show in both places. We do anticipate ending FY '18 spending little to no fund balance. Here's the detail on the decrease in the appropriated fund balance comparing '18 to And here's the impact of the education request. So again, the detail, if you look at the request with the education increase, again, that would take us to a tax rate of 53.9 cents, appropriated fund balance of $6.8 million and an undesignated fund balance of 15%. If you look at the budget without that requested increase, we'd be at a tax rate of 52.9 cents, appropriated fund balance of $7.3 million, and again, maintaining right at our current policy, 15% undesignated fund balance. Just to highlight quickly, as you know, under general statute, I'm required to bring you a balanced budget. And to make the point to you, if you look at the blues on the top around revenues, 77% of our revenues come from public funds, either property tax, sales tax, or intergovernmental monies that primarily we see show up in health and human services. The flip of that, if you look at the bottom of the screen in the oranges, you'll see that correspondingly, the 73% of your expenditures are in the areas of human services, education, and public safety, areas where the General Assembly in North Carolina designates counties as the deliverers of those services. If you look at it on the next slide from a net county cost, I would point out to you that your largest net county investment in is the area of public education at 32%, human services at 20%, public safety at 19%. I said last time, and I'll say it again, this is a really wordy and complex slide, and that is a nod to the General Assembly, who's giving you fairly wordy and complex instructions when it comes to public education. It goes from the very specific around facilities and furniture and apparatus to just a general that you'll expand local funds to address the needs of the school system. I'll point out to you in bold at the bottom because that's relevant to the recommendation I've made to you about not compromising our own fund balance policy. The General Assembly acknowledges you need to remain consistent with your own financial Talk briefly about sales tax because most of what we're going to focus on tonight in the budget hearing relates to education in our fire districts where our tax base is important and very influenced by the economy. I think most everybody knows that when you go out and make a purchase, you pay 7% sales tax on every purchase. That really equates to seven pennies on a dollar, and of that, the Department of Revenue sends back to counties and cities 2.25 cents. And as you'll see on the next slide, that really gets distributed between our education systems, our fire districts, our municipalities, and then the county. And as you make decisions, and we've shared that data with you, we've shared the calculator with you around the tax rate requests for fire districts, it's with awareness it impacts our own sales tax revenues. It's the same pie, it just gets divided differently, and that's an important point that I want to make.
Ms. Stone, these graphics are online, aren't they?
They are.
Available, yeah. Because I mean, you've heard me talk about it. I really love this format. It's easy for just anybody to understand, especially me, so I appreciate it.
They are all online. Talk specifically about the Buncombe County school funding. As noted, the requested increase was at $3.2 million for FY '19. That includes salary increases for local staff, impact on health insurance and retirement, some increased behavioral health services, tax books, and graduation initiative, which was a total budget request of $65,730,649. We are proposing a total increase in funding of, as you'll see at the bottom of that slide, of $2,685,477. That is a reduction of $616,000 to preserve our fund balance policy. And as you'll see on the next slide, that gets split with the ADM with the city, but would impact the Buncombe County school request by $518,802. On, I think we missed one. On the city schools, again, the total with contingency would be an increase of $503,926, holding their impact based on their ADM share of us not funding the $616,000, that would impact our own fund balance policy, is about $97,000. As I shared with you last time, because we are very focused on organizational risk and budgeting for the long term, we've seen substantial increase, significant increase in our general fund, public school contribution, an increase of $20 million over the last five years. As I shared last time, that's relevant because it is pacing our growth, our increase in revenues, and it just means if that trend's going to continue, we have to think about the strategies to support it as we move forward as an organization. You see the average of those increases over that five-year period, and obviously is just right under $4 million a year in increases. Same is true when you look at salary supplement. We got a public information request to go back on the history of when salary supplements got approved, and I wish I remembered the year, 1987, thank you, at $428,000 was where we began. And what we've seen over the last five-year period is an increase in $6 million in terms of salary supplement. So again, what the recommendation to you is, is that we hold $2.7 million for the school request in contingency until the state budget's finalized, and we understand the total impact of the state budget, and we are certainly close to that point. And Dr. Baldwin's been very helpful in updating me on where that stands.
And Ms. Stone, the increase in the teacher pay through the supplements, that's part of the overall increase in public school funding, too. So it's not both those numbers together. The increase in teacher pay is part of that larger increase in public school funding.
Yes. What sits, at least if you flip to the next slide, historically, Buncombe has not included this in the actual public school funding, but in addition to the dollars we just talked about, we are in FY '19 proposing a county investment of $4.1 million. That includes school resource officers, social workers, and school nurses. As you heard in the education work session, AB Tech requested an increase of $220,000, which would bring their total county funding to 6.5 million. That dealt with salary increases, some preventive maintenance and utility rate increases was their specific request. You'll see the trend data for AB Tech's funding from the county from 2014 to the proposed '19 budget. You also pass a non-general fund budget, and that recommendation this year is $107,849,894. Those are all offset by other supporting revenues and transfers, and the list of those you'll see on your screen. One of those you're going to hear more about in a little bit. So what this budget delivers is it addresses the majority of education's requests. It maintains quality county services and addresses county service needs. It fulfills our commitment to post-retirement liability required for us, whether that's our credit rating or expectations from local government commission. It strengthens our capital infrastructure. It restores fleet management funding, so an ongoing account that supports ensuring our fleet is safe, and we can update it on a regular basis. Continues to address salaries for the lowest-paid employees. On a more project-specific level, continues your investment in affordable housing, some large projects like LeWalc or Heights, and the completion at Eagle Market, as well as your ongoing support to affordable housing initiatives. It does include funding for greenways and trails, and I want to talk about those. You are scheduled in August to hear more detailed presentations on these, but it includes a woodfin project where the total community investment is $13.9 million, and the county would invest $1 million over four years. The Inca Trail, where the total county investment over four years is $1.2 million, and the total project is $13 million. And the Black Mountain Greenway, where we would invest $400,000 over a three-year period for a total project of $2.8 million. So we want you to see, and we'll be bringing to you in August, the details of each of those projects and the community impact of all of them. And we are proposing to you in this budget that securing the funds for our match, and we're largely doing that through maximizing our ongoing greenway maintenance fund, but designating it for projects. We address long overdue updates to the Lake Joyem playground and the dock, which are safety issues. I mean, we really are trying to say in this budget, when you think about our parks that we own and are responsible for, that's just basic infrastructure to ensure they're safe for the public. Includes the East Asheville Library and renovations, substantial renovations to the Inca Library, includes your community investment grants, and you're continuing to fund your strategic We, throughout this budget process in the last year as well, have been very focused on what are the risks we face as an organization, and what strategies can we implement to mitigate those risks. As you know, we're in the process of doing a salary study, and we'll have to identify strategies to address that. Like all organizations, we struggle with rising healthcare costs, and ways we manage those. Delayed debt and capital needs, we know, and you're going to hear later tonight about strategies to manage our jail population, but that's always on our radar. We have new department heads across the organization, and with that comes both opportunity, new ideas and creativity, but it also requires training and support and increased infrastructure. We're always watching for any indication of slowing of growth. We've lived on growth, and we're really watching that. Always have to watch in the General Assembly, specifically requirements that they shift to counties and/or redistribution of sales taxes, you saw earlier. That's really significant funding for us. From a mitigation standpoint, this year, we rolled out what's been in the works for three years, a new financial software system that has increased accountability and transparency built into it. We've also increased our public transparency and communication. We've clarified our roles, and I talked about that last time. We've built out and will continue to build out our performance management model, and we've increased not only our internal audit capacity, but we've increased, we've built autonomy into that infrastructure. As we move forward into the next year, we're focused and disciplined and are driven by looking at how do we make sure the changes we've made in the last year get solidified and actually are a part of our culture and infrastructure. We will be rolling out this summer an online checkbook to provide even increased transparency to the- to the public. We will be rolling out next year a recommended participatory budget process that engages the public even more throughout the year in the budget process, and we have budgeted to purchase an open government platform that allows citizens to participate in our processes even when they can't come to meetings. We can, are updating the county's strategic plan, and we are asking you, as we move forward with focus and discipline, to remember that as you receive one-time revenues, they need to either reduce debt or, or go into fund balance, but you can't fund ongoing reoccurring expenses with one-time revenues. Want to talk about, because education and fire districts are the two things that I think are the public probably will weigh in on. Again, we talked about this before, but I feel like for me, one of the most important things we've done in the last year is clarify our, our roles. The public elects you to set policy, set tax rate, and determine the budget. You know, management's responsibility is to deliver those services the most efficient and effective way we can, and we have to rely on the experts in our community, and depending on the area we're discussing, and when you're talking fire districts, that's your fire chiefs in how we move forward. Why it matters to us to address long-term strategies around fire districts is their frontline protection for all of us. Very public, lots of media attention on at least two departments who faced financial challenges in the last year, and we want to have long-term strategies, sustainable strategies to address that. You've held multiple work sessions on this issue to hear from chiefs and better educate yourselves, better educate staff about their operations and the risks they face. What's in this budget are requests from twelve of your twenty districts for tax rate increases. That total increase would be two point seven million dollars. You have focused on your attention into seeing fire districts able to pay their firefighters at least in line with the average across North Carolina. You also have some districts requesting increases to support capital and reserves. People, the public can go online, click on this link, and see the detailed requests from every district. This page really shows you the seventeen rate, eighteen rate, and requested nineteen rate for the twelve of twenty districts who have asked for an increase. The range of increases, as we talked about before, are from point oh eight to five point five. In addition to the rate increase, you have to consider what the value of that is in these individual districts, the value on a penny. You know, you, you have a request for four cents, that's equates to a hundred, almost a hundred and forty-five thousand, and a request of a cent, that's close to half a million, so it really does matter what the value is in those districts. It's important, as you consider these rate increases and weigh out decisions, to understand that last year, these, this does not include all the fire districts, but only the twelve that are, have made rate increases, that they did not, they did not go revenue neutral, they remained above revenue neutral tax rate last year, and this tells you that, that was one point three, almost one point four million increased revenues to those twelve districts. We also think it's important for you to look at what are their operating ratios. So simply put, around those twelve departments is, how do their revenues equate to their expenditures? If you see a one or greater, that means they have more revenue than expenditures, and you will, these, those rates are up for you to weigh out as you hear from fire districts and move forward in your decision-making. You know, when we look at what reserves to our districts need, we know that's a very complex issue, and we want to spend the next year better understanding it, and how do we right-size that? It seems, I, I don't want to oversimplify it, and I encourage you, I know you've spent a lot of time on this issue, to understand we have to strike a balance between having, just like for us, having enough reserves, but not holding on to the public's money if we don't need to. Fire district reserves are really complicated. You have to look at the size of the organization, you have to look at the volatility of their revenues, you have to look at tax burden on constituents, and you have to look at how each of them does capital planning and their financial strategies. It's one of those areas, we feel like over the next year, there's the opportunity for more consistency and transparency. County support, as we move forward, is we've already talked to the board and will move to providing cash flow support to our departments, so they will receive their revenues in equal payments across the twelve months in the year. We are updating the service agreements, there's about twenty-nine million dollars of public funds involved in this, and as we have moved through the last year, we want to make sure anytime we're expanding public funds, there's transparency, there's accountability. So in our service agreements, we're providing more financial capital and personnel benchmarks, we're offering training to fire district staff and boards, we're asking to work collectively with the chiefs about are there ways to, to assess consolidation of back-office supports and achieve efficiencies that might allow them to invest more money in the direct service delivery? We're assessing are there ways we could help with combined insurance pools? We heard from all of them, and you heard in your January work session, they are challenged by the cost of health insurance, and the data is staggering about the health risk our firefighters face, so we want to make sure that there's adequate health insurance for all of them, and that it's as affordable as it can be. And how do we make sure this system's sustainable in the long term? I will tell you, even since we did this work and have had the work sessions, that our fire chiefs, as well as the county, have been notified that while they had exemptions to some of the Fair Labor Standard Act's requirements around overtime in the past, that our nonprofit providers will not move in forward, this is a real challenge for them financially. So to remind the public and to remind you, that all of the following materials listed on your screen are available to them online, and have been available to them since a week before the May fifteenth budget hearing. We continue to invite public input. You can do that through the Let's Talk hotline, you can do it through either email us at Let's Talk, or you can do it, email us at Budget, either one of those. Certainly tonight is an opportunity, and I would say for our commissioners and staff that every day between now and when you vote on the budget is an opportunity. And I'm happy to answer questions before you move into the public hearing.
So with the fire districts, as we've learned, we, with the schools, we can give money, but they don't always use it as our intention is. If we approve some of the increases, because my intention would only be to increase firefighter pay, we don't have any control whether they'll really do that or not.
You, you asked them for specific plans that addressed that, and they provided those to you? It is true that their, their revenues would come to them directly, and it would be us asking for them to account for that after receiving those revenues.
But there aren't any guarantees?
You know, I feel like we enter a relationship with them as we've entered a relationship with other partners, where it's about trust and respect, about what our individual roles are, and that's the kind of framework we're trying to move forward from. Other questions?
Looks like there's none others ready at this moment.
All right.
Yes, sir. Feel free.
I was going to put a PowerPoint up tonight that's a year old, but I'm not going to do it, because what we just said here and heard from Ms. Stone, pretty well put it out there. It's been pretty tough on our staff for one year. We had a manager that wasn't here half the time, because, but Mandy Stone's been sitting here, not been on a plane, been in Buncombe County for one year. I think she's been out of town one day, and she left at four in the morning, and she got back in here that afternoon. She had a meeting at nine o'clock to twelve-thirty, and she was back here at five in the afternoon. I'm really tired of people saying that bringing Ms. Stone to where she's at was a bad deal. It wasn't. She basically put forward a minute ago what I was going to say in a PowerPoint, or it is a PowerPoint, it's, you know, the wool was pulled over her eyes a year ago by Ms. Green. And the fact is, I'm proud to have this lady run this show. Do we agree on everything? No. But you saw what she has done to our budget, she's pulled numbers down, she's pulled eight million dollars here, she's done this, she's made sure the people that didn't get that one and a half percent in their money, at Christmas they got five hundred dollars, plus they got the, the incentive of the one and a half percent to people from forty-five thousand dollars down that did not get it before. So I know it's a, not the total budget night, and I was going to do this earlier, but I was going to bring it forward, and I was going to bring it on paper, and it was one-year-old piece of paper that I had to do last year that I was going to bring forward. From what she just showed you tonight, I can't do that. I may show it to you later, but I can't do it tonight, because it's just tough. These people, it's like she said, we have a lot of new staff. She's, she's had to shift, she's had to move, she's had to take money in certain areas, and, and certain people are leaving it that, you know, it's, it's just not, it's not anybody's fault, but everybody had a trust in a person, everybody, including myself and the people up here on this board, that didn't work out. But we have a trust now, I have the trust, and hopefully the rest of the board goes with me, that Ms. Stone's going to guide this county in the best way that she can. I'm tired of hearing it from John Boyle, I'm tired of hearing it from anybody in the paper that, you know, just promoting her and not going outside. If we'd have went outside, people, I'm going to tell you what, we wouldn't be where we are today, because there's nobody to sit here and put up with what she's had to put up with for one year, and it's been bad. So I just want to thank her for what she's done, I want to thank the staff for what they've done. Are we always going to agree? No. But right now, what I saw tonight, and you saw tonight, is what she's trying to do for the schools, the fire departments, the police departments, and, and the public to try to save money. And we listen, I do. So thank you, Ms. Stone, for what you do.
Commissioner Fryer, you and I don't always agree on things, that might be an understatement at times, but I want to thank you for your remarks, and Mandy Stone inherited a mess, a horrible, horrible mess, and I was reflecting back, this time last, we're going to hear a presentation about the Justice Resource Center. This time last year, the past manager was doing everything under the sun she could to stop the Justice Resource Center, and so the work that they've done against a lot of adversity and against somebody putting stumbling blocks every step of the way, it's a miracle. I think it started in August, so I, I applaud the staff that took over and started digging us out and creating the amazing changes that we've made, and I support you. And like Fryer, we don't always agree on things, but on this, I do, and it's, it's mind-boggling what happened.
All right. Ms. Stone, any other information at this time, or should we open the public hearing? Okay, thank you very much, great. All right, we will open the public hearing on the proposed FY nineteen budget. Just to make sure everyone's clear, we're not voting on the budget this evening, we anticipate voting on this at our next regular county commission meeting in two weeks from today. All right, we'll begin, and I'll start over on this side, and Mr. Hunt, and we'll work our way this way. We're opening the hearing at six thirty-one.
My name is Mark Hunt, friends of Woodfinn, Greenway, and Blue Way. We work in partnership with the town of Woodfinn to advance the Greenway and Blue, Blue Way project there, and Ms. Stone, thank you so much for the overview you provided about the proposed funding commitments that Buncombe County will be making, would be making, to the Black Mountain Project, the Inca Project, the Woodfinn Project. I'll highlight that there are a lot of people that have worked hard to develop funding partnerships, combine these projects are forty million dollars. The county's commitment equals seven and a half percent, and there are many other players at the table co-funding these projects. I'm not here to ask for any more money. The budget, as Ms. Stone laid out, includes funding for the upcoming year. I am here to suggest a bit more clarity and transparency in terms of these specific projects. The budget documents that are available online include various amounts in different pockets, mostly within the operating budget, mostly within a line item called Greenway's contingency. I was unable to find references in the budget documents to the Woodfinn Project or the Inca Project, and our suggestion would be that within the next two weeks, by the time the vote would take place, that the budget documents be updated to reflect the specific commitments. And just to be clear, I think what I heard Ms. Stone say, and what I believe the intent of the majority of the commissioners is, is that with the Woodfinn Project, a one-million-dollar target over four years, so that'd be two hundred and fifty thousand a year, the Inca Project, one point two million, I believe that may be only over three years, there was some discussion earlier today, Black Mountain Project, four hundred thousand over four years, so the, the, the amounts are spread over those years, and the important reason for being clear about what the commitments by project and by year are, the other funders at the table are looking to the county for a firm commitment in the budget document voted on by this commission, so that they will know that the similar commitments they are making are backed as well by others at the table. The other funders have, have made, had, already had board votes in most cases and made their commitments, so we ask for improved transparency and clarity in the budget that is voted on two weeks from now. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir, in the second row.
Commissioners, my name is Ken Michael Love, and I'm a resident of the county and the city. Page two of the budget summary allocates a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to Pack Place Cultural Partnership. The comment is transferred from strategic partnership grants. In reality, this is nothing more than funding a portion of the building operations of a city building formerly known as Pack Place for the primary benefit of the Asheville Art Museum and the Diane O'Orham Theater. I don't know if there's any other funding for Pack Place Art Museum, or the Art Museum in this budget, but if there is, I'd focus on that too. The last time I looked at the lease agreement between the city and the building occupants, the lease had not been signed, and there was no agreement on how the building would be operated on a day-to-day basis. I'm not aware the county is a party to that lease. I recommend that you as commissioners have the lease reviewed by your attorney, and that you receive a report from your attorney on the day-to-day operations of the building as it pertains to the lease, to assure yourself that the lease requirements have been fully implemented. The building is owned by the City of Asheville after being illegally taken by the city from the Pack Place Board. The city manipulated with the help of the Art Museum the buys of Pack Place and pressured the untimely move of the Colbert Art Museum, Colbert Museum out of the untimely move of the Colbert Art Museum, Colbert Museum, out of the building. There's no justification for the county to fund a city building operations. The city, the county, and the TDA have given millions to support the Art Museum over the past 15 years. The Art Museum has an endowment, they have all the capital funds they need, and it's time the county stopped the funding of the Art Museum. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Matthew Malzby, I'm the board president for the Asheville Museum of Science, formerly the Colbert Art Science Museum. So Mr. Michael Love, I couldn't have asked for a better intro. But today, I really am just here to say thank you to the county. You've been a great strategic partner for us up until this point. And really, I just ask that you consider and put some good thought into our multi-year ask for operational support. So again, thank you. We appreciate all that you've done so far, we look forward to being a good partner with you going forward.
All right, thank you. Mr. Rice, and then Mr. Yelton.
I just want to say, Mr. Chairman, board members, I am a advocate for special needs kids, here in my little document of pack stickers that shows you I've been in a lot of schools, and well-educated on it. I want to talk to you today about a specific item in your budget, and that is supplements for the teachers. And I'm going to preface my first statement, to be politically correct is not being financially responsible. I've asked for the salary supplement policy, or ordinance, that the county commissioners have had, yet, I have yet to receive it, my third time. That was not 1987, that was 1977, the year that my son was born. Now, that is not a policy, and it's not an ordinance, it's within the current expense. Giving $20 million over a five-year period in the current expense is not being financially responsible. It is being politically correct, though. This is a local Buncombe County Commission problem that needs corrected before this budget is passed. The taxpayers have given $20 million in the last five years, and in two, in, two school systems are sitting on $20.2 million. The $20 million you're talking about, you gave it to them over five years. We're talking about the $20.2 in their fund balance. The two, the teacher union has went down to Raleigh, and they've advocated for money, they've advocated for a lot of things, plus, number one, was their salary. Let me remind you, the salary supplement is not tied to anything except you commissioners. This is not a requirement by the state, and neither the state has no business in it. What you have been doing for years, you have bankrolled the school system in their fund balance, that's the reason they've got the $20.2. When the old teachers retired, the money folded back in, and you just sat on it, and that's the reason. You do not have a policy in place to account for this money, or you would have had financially responsibility instead of your political correctness. Votes by the school system is seven to one. That's the reason the money is going out of here. If Ms. Green can be got for several million dollars, I think it's criminal for a bunch of commissioners not to be financially responsible on this fund balance. I'm not talking about not giving the teachers what they need, I'm talking about having a policy. And three minutes ain't long enough, I'll finish up in public comment.
All right, thank you. Mr. Yelton. Mr. Yelton, come on, come on.
Well, I'm going to go in reverse order, shake things up a little bit. I agree with you, Mike, you heard me say the first time when Mandy was appointed county manager. Many, many years ago, in Social Services, I asked her what the budget was, and she was able to give me a complete list. What came from the state, what came from the Fed, what came from the county, and that was a good mark. So I'm going to start at the end of your presentation. First, I must want to sing praises, because now we got a date of when the checkbook's going to be online. And I've been preaching for that for probably 15 years. See, there's one thing, you may not like what I say, and I really don't care, because at 70, you get pretty crotchety anyway, but I think solution. And the solution for your problem that Ellen pointed out with your fire departments, with the educational system, and you ought to think about doing this policy. Any nonprofit that gets tax dollars must open their complete books to this board. Think about what I just said. That way, you'll find out if the money's going where it's supposed to be going. I'm still looking for cost per library, and I think that will help, because the man from Woodfin just pointed that out today about a line item budget for their project. You know where the money's going, then you've got, that's a nonprofit, you've got, you've got to know where it's going, you've got to know it before you give it to them, that solves all the problem. But the most important thing, and the last thing of her presentation, was lower the debt. If you get more money this year, and you don't operate with the same amount of money next year, and you don't lower the debt, and I'm not going to be for any of you, except who ever votes to not lower the debt, and I'm going to be after you for the rest of my life. Because when it comes to affordable housing, it comes to anything you do. When I walked in today, I knew it was money day, because everybody's here. On a regular meeting, there's more people up here than there are out here. So the bottom line is, you really and truthfully need to think about, when you make affordable housing available, when you help people, you're taking it from somebody else. And I think you need to think about that. You did address that. But there's some of us locals born and raised here, and we work hard to stay here, and we work hard to live here. I used to have a coal stove in the living room and a wood stove in the kitchen, and I had to go to an outhouse, and it was cold in the wintertime, you could get up and see where I've been sitting.
All right, anybody else? Yes, sir.
Hi, Greg Borm, Children First Commies and Schools of Buncombe County. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I wanted to first start off saying thank you to this county commission for prioritizing housing affordability and early childhood education. Those are two big issues that we focus a lot on, and it does, doesn't be good to see such support coming from this commission. I want to talk about our recommendation that I've shared with you all by email, and I know you've heard it from other of our partners in the community, about increasing funding for the housing, the county's Housing Trust Fund. And we've put out this idea of trying to help move the county to put about a penny for the $100 of property tax value into the county's trust fund, ramping that up over the next few years. And let me say a bit about why we think that's so important. First of all, I want to thank you and recognize the county for all the funding you've currently given to housing affordability projects like Lee Walker Heights, like the Evelyn Teacher Housing. These are critical projects in our community, and you've understood that, and you've really stepped up, and have made those investments. But the county Housing Trust Fund gives you a unique opportunity to really control the funds that go into future projects, and really to set the tone in this community, that the county is going to be in this game for the long term. It's a signal to developers, both our private developers, our nonprofit developers, that there's going to be funds there for projects that they might want to consider developing. This is a successful model that's been used in municipalities and counties around the country, and the City of Asheville has had great success with theirs as well. What you heard at the work session on housing affordability, too, was that there's a lot of opportunity in this community to draw down the eight, excuse me, the 4% low-income housing tax credits by developers, but those usually need additional financing coming in. And we think that the, that a robust county Housing Trust Fund can really help in that space, and hope that you'll consider looking at ways that you can increase the funding in that, and grow it over time. We know you're under a lot of constraints, but it's an economic development tool, it's what we need for an affordable community. And thanks again for your support of housing affordability.
All right, thank you. All right, last chance for now. Okay, thank you all for your input. We'll close the public hearing on the budget, and again, we're going to vote on, we plan to vote on the budget in two weeks from today. And Commissioner, I think there's been a request to take a short recess. Can we take a five-minute, five-minute recess?